Just as you figure out, they are. They got the trencher going again because the ground won't support it. They're all those fall away behind the storeroom. They should be around the corner by the end of the day. And I told them two days' notice.
Well, if they get to that point on Thursday, or on Friday, you'd have, you know, till the first part of next week.
Well, but I gotta have Rick here to fill. Told him, try to plan on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Rick usually works Monday and fills, fills the plan up. Right?
Sounds good. All right. Stay out of trouble.
You too, Greg.
All right, it's ten o'clock. Get started.
Can I ask for something?
Yeah.
Can we go over the revenues? Just, I want you to number to go in the spots, make sure what I have is right. What we decided.
You give us a number.
All right, this is the actuals from 2425. Because I had to go back because there was a little bit of confusion there, the IRP fees and public utility tax and all that.
All right, so what numbers are we? Okay.
All right, I have a revenue of fifty-four.
All right, which, which one?
What do you mean?
There's about seven or eight 301s.
The property tax, current expense.
The property tax?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that we did from the, I've got fifty-four nine sixty-two.
Now, where you want to put that under what? Actual general fund?
This, yeah, these are the actual numbers.
Okay, do it again.
Five four nine six two. What did you guys have?
From last time, I don't have my sheet from last time.
I didn't, I don't think I put anything down for that.
Okay.
Did you put anything down longer?
I'm looking, I thought they were out here.
Okay, so, property taxes, excess levy. Where it says twenty-two eight fifteen.
What number?
Three oh one ninety.
Three oh one one hundred, I don't have it here.
Where the twenty-two eight fifteen is on the budget?
It says three oh one, property tax, excess levy, but it's three times.
It says linked to excess levy tab, three oh one.
Three oh one ninety?
Yeah.
Now, what is it?
It's, I have twenty-three six fifty as the actual revenue. You got yours? Okay, I'll wait on you.
Can you look in on?
Look at three oh one oh one, property taxes, current expense, where it says forty-four seven seventeen.
I tried to arrange all mine, so the numbers.
We got forty-four seven one seven. Three oh one oh one.
Which one?
All right, that number, the actual number for twenty-four twenty-five is fifty-four nine sixty-two. So, write that down so we can add up.
In the three oh one oh one?
Yeah, property taxes, current expense.
Fifty-four nine sixty-two.
Yep, and then, property taxes, excess levy, the first one where it says twenty-two eight fifteen.
Three oh one ninety.
Yep.
Two, twenty-three thousand six fifty.
Twenty-three six fifty.
Six fifty.
Yep.
Excess tax. I have an actual of six eight four four.
Three oh four?
Yes.
Okay, what is it again?
Six eight four four. The one below it, business and occupation, I have fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven.
Fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven?
Yes. Wine and liquor, right below it, I have forty-nine.
Forty-nine hundred or forty-nine dollars?
Forty-nine dollars. Animal control tax, right under it, we actually had a hundred fifty-four dollars. Drop down to three twenty, we'll just leave it at twelve.
Three twenty?
Fire and fees and court costs.
Okay.
Licenses, three twenty.
Wait a minute, what did you have for that one?
Twelve.
Twelve dollars?
Twelve hundred.
Oh, twelve hundred.
Yeah, leave it.
One three twenty.
Okay.
Three thousand six hundred thirteen dollars.
Okay.
Three twenty-six, building permit fees, seventy-five dollars. Three twenty-seven miscellaneous permits, I have a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now, that is so high because the companies had to get demolition permits for all the buildings.
Right.
So, that's.
A hundred and sixty-five?
Hundred and sixty-five. Because the two companies, they had to get demolition permits on the houses they tore down. Franchise fees, I have five thousand six hundred dollars. Three thirty is IRP fees. I found out that when we get that check, it comes as public utility. And then, it breaks up the columns. So, the public utility tax, current, goes into three oh one. That's why that's fifty-four thousand. Make sense? Let me see, a second. This is how that comes in. So, this column goes under your public utility tax, which is three oh one. And the excess levy goes in the excess levy, which is three oh one ninety or whatever. The IRP truck fees, current expense, that goes down in three thirty for the IRP truck fees.
And that's what?
Well, this is just an example, that's not, yeah, I just want to show you what it is.
It just breaks down into three.
Four.
Four categories.
Yeah, current and excess for public and for IRP. So, this money gets deposited into the excess levy account, bank account. Know what I mean? And that comes under the truck fees. So, for the truck fees, IRP fees, I have six thousand one hundred six dollars.
That's three thirty?
Three thirty.
Yeah, yes.
Six thousand?
One oh six.
One oh six.
Okay. Now, I don't have any, well, we got the pool, I'm assuming we put that in parks and rags.
Three forty?
Yes. Twenty-nine thousand two eighty-eight.
Now, if you say assume, are you gonna check to make sure that's where it goes?
Yeah, yeah, it's gotta go under, yeah, and then, the expenses go under pool. So, the income goes in park, parks and rags. Uh, go down to three sixty-six, state government grant.
Hold you a minute.
Two thousand three hundred.
Wait a minute, let me, fingers are not working. What number?
Three six six.
Three six six, okay.
Two thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars, that's for Home Fest.
Two thousand three hundred?
Two. Two three seven six.
Two three seven six.
Now, contributions from other entities, that's where the, I'm assuming, it's gotta go somewhere. That's the pool grant, that's where I put that for five thousand dollars. You ready?
Yeah.
Three seventy-two, federal payment in lieu of taxes, eleven thousand two hundred eleven dollars. Three seventy-four, payroll reimbursements. That is actually taking the water money and the sewer money, that, the guys get paid sewer. The guys and me get paid water. That's just what was moved for the four of us into the general account. Thirty-two eight twenty-four. Thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-four. Three seventy-six, gaming income, ten thousand five sixty-nine. Reimbursements, three eighty-one. That's your nine forty-one taxes. They come out of water and sewer, that was twelve thousand sixty-five dollars. And your P, your refunds and rebates, three hundred.
Three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on the last page, three ninety-seven. Video lottery. Five thousand seventy-six dollars. Three ninety-nine, miscellaneous revenues, that's your bad checks. We'll keep five hundred dollars.
How much?
Five hundred. So, the total revenues I have, I added these all together, is two hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. All right, ready for the expenditures? Everybody look at this. Is that it? It's this white thing here, summary pay, yes. What I've done is I've taken, there's a green and yellow, it's got different colors on it, so it's expenditures. This is from last year. Who's got it?
Uh, which one?
One packet. That's okay, that's it.
Yep. Make sure I don't have anything else.
This is the city expenditures from last year. I went through all these, highlighted them, where they went, how much it cost, and that's what this is. If you'd like to look at that later, I'm not making copies of that.
Yeah, okay, no.
Look at the colors. So, we have to decide how to break up city hall and city clerk expenses. Shelley said that was between you guys and me, and it has to be consistent.
You mean, expenses for the city hall building itself as, as opposed to?
Get your city hall paper.
City hall and clerk's office.
Those are two different expenditures in the budget. So, we need to figure out what goes under city hall, what goes under expenditures, or city clerk.
Clerk's office, okay.
So, let me get my thing here. City clerk, the subscriptions, software subscriptions we have.
That's clerk, I would say, right? Should we just go through them one by one, or have you already figured out?
No, 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 we're gonna go through them, I have my, I have my. Choices, you guys have a pen and a different, we'll, you know, we'll just go. So, I have Adobe and Amazon.
Oh, wait a minute, where are we at?
That next page, this one, Terry.
Wait a minute, I'm on it.
The second page.
Okay.
Expenses, city hall and clerks, and we're just separating city hall expenses from clerk's office expenses.
Yes.
We should be able to kind of common sense that, I hope.
Right, right.
Like, office supplies are gonna be.
City clerk.
Clerk, and, and things like, um.
I think the Adobe subscription is clerk.
Clerk.
This is what I have, I have Adobe monthly subscription, the Amazon office supply. Office Depot, because that was for the printer. My salary, that goes in the clerk's.
The rest is.
So, yeah.
That kind of makes sense.
Like, the Addys camera, for down there on Third Street, I think that should be under city hall.
Absolutely.
Okay. Utilities, Bergmeyer's, city hall.
Yep.
Carousel checks, I didn't know what to do with that, that was just basically giving us deposit books. So, I imagine that would be, uh, let's just be clerk one up. Do clerk on that?
Yeah.
Clerk it is. Comcast is a utility, so that will go under city hall.
Yep.
Ferrari and Associates, that's our audit, that should go under city hall. First Energy, city hall. Allen and Plumbing, that was for like that furnace, and stuff like that.
Drain problems.
Chamber of Commerce, city hall.
Now, what's the Chamber of Commerce, a hundred dollars for?
That's a due.
Mineral County Chamber of Commerce, we're members. Or the GSA.
Yep. Now, the News Tribune, I'm thinking that probably will go under city clerk, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mountain Air Gas is a city hall. Office Depot is mine, of course, clerk.
That is interesting, is that really city hall, or is that, um?
Could that be divided?
No, that's kind of an odd one.
That's employee, that's all the employees.
City hall, is that what you're saying?
Um, not necessar, oh, but it should be all, yes.
City hall.
Would be, all employees are working for the city hall and being paid by the city hall, not by the clerk individually, so, city hall makes more sense.
How about checking with Shelley?
We could, if we're, if we're endowed, I think, um.
The city hall makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense, but I mean.
Put a little.
She said it didn't matter, but we had to stick to it.
Yeah, as long as we, we could choose anything, it's had to be consistent.
It's gotta stick to it. All right, now, we're not gonna have these next year, but the Mineral County Sheriff's taxes, that was for four houses that got torn down, that wasn't paid by the owners. Because the weight was closed upon, so I think that is a city hall.
I think that you're right.
Okay. Now, here comes a sticky thing, postage. I think that's under both. I'm the one that prints it. I'm thinking that's probably gonna be a clerk thing, but. When I do the big dump, like at water bill time, when a credit card comes in, I take the money out of water for that. Because those are the water bills that are going out. Does that make sense?
Water bill should pay the water postage, it seems.
Right, right.
Or, or is that really just a general city hall expense, because we always.
Is it, yeah, is it city hall, city clerk, where you want it under?
I think city hall.
City hall, I would call it city hall, I think, because it's used for those different things.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, the West Virginia tax payment, mineral tax payment, we'll put those under city hall.
Oh, did we skip a few there?
Oh, I'm sorry, I already got mine marked, that's what, municipal league, I got city hall.
City hall.
Yeah.
West Virginia Corp is a city insurance, city hall.
Both of those.
Workers' comp, city hall.
Yeah.
Recorder's dues, thirty-five dollars, city hall, that goes to municipal league. Uh, West Virginia State Auditor fee, they charge us money when we get our books audited, I think that should come from city hall. Tax payments, city hall.
State and.
Mineral tax payment, same.
Yeah. Now, the state treasurer, that go pay thing is, when somebody pays online and they mess up an account number, or they bounce the payment because they don't have enough in it, we get charged fifteen dollars. So, that's why when somebody does that, we charge them twenty dollars.
Okay.
City hall, because I have to send that into the state auditor, city hall.
Makes sense.
City hall for the region eight dues, it looks like, too.
Yes. My salary will go under city clerk. I do not have those separated. I'll get those separated, hold on, if I can get it real quick here.
City hall. Yeah. Okay, how are you? That was breakfast.
What?
What? I told you I ought to come up here, you guys ought to try this place in Washington, D.C.
Jan and I talked about that, I don't know.
So, for city clerk office. I have twenty-two thousand.
Where are we at?
This is just a total.
A total, she's splitting these into two, and we get totals, which will go.
All right, now, can we start all over again here?
For the city clerk expenses.
City clerk expenses.
Twenty-two five thirty-one.
Twenty-two five thirty-one, so. Okay.
So, that leaves fifty-eight four twenty-eight for city hall.
Fifty-eight.
Four twenty, oh, wait a minute.
Four twenty.
Four twenty-seven, fifty-eight four twenty-seven.
And that's city hall.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Okay, so that's, that was be, this would be the twenty-four twenty-five total. Does that sound about right?
Think so. In the total, is this what you got down, about eighty thousand nine hundred five cents?
Yeah, yep. But that'll be different, I'll switch that up, I'll make another page for city clerk. Actually, I do have it made up, I just didn't know what we wanted to go.
Okay.
So, the next page we got is pool. Wait a minute, let me do this. Take your expenditure packet, if you would, please. The budget thing.
What number?
This one.
What's the number on?
You have this one, yeah?
Yeah. Just what's the number, start with.
All right, we're gonna do four oh four. Because we use that Home Fest grant, so that's gonna be.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me find, four oh four.
Should be on the front page.
I know, but. Just do this, okay. Oh, I have one somewhere there, okay.
So, state grants is gonna be two three seven six, because of Home Fest.
General budget?
Yeah, general government.
What is it again?
Two three seven six.
Okay, then I have the mayor's office, it'll be eighteen hundred dollars.
What number?
Four oh nine.
Okay.
And then, four ten, I have six thousand. Okay, city clerk's office is gonna be fifty, no, no, twenty-two five thirty-one.
How much?
Twenty-two five thirty-one.
What number?
Four fifteen.
You've got thirty-one thousand here.
Well, we just split them out between clerk and city hall, so those are the new.
Okay. You want us to hear me again?
Twenty-two five thirty-one. Well, let me see something. I'm assuming other grants.
Four thirty-two.
Yeah, would you feel confident putting the five thousand dollars there for the pool?
Five thousand.
We usually get it, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll put five thousand there. And regional development authority, four thirty-five. Is seven hundred eighteen.
Seven hundred eighteen.
Yeah.
Instead of seven eighty-four.
Let me add these up real quick. Got a grand total for that page of thirty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-five.
Thirty-eight.
Four oh two five.
Four two five.
All right, city hall is gonna be fifty-eight four twenty-seven, four forty.
Fifty-eight four two seven?
Yes.
All right, say it again.
So, the total for that page is fifty-eight four twenty-seven. Public safety.
What number?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. There's a police page in your packet. So, the total I have.
For seven hundred?
Yeah, I have, well, sixteen one fifty-five, you might as well say is gonna go up. Does that sound good?
Sixteen one fifty-five?
Yeah. Because this year, we've got two more payments on the police cruisers. And that's your GMV bank first government lease, then we won't have that expense.
Good.
Okay, so we'll just put. Do you just wanna leave the eighteen in there? Or do you want the actual expense from? A little budget wiggle.
It's kind of negligible either way.
Let's just leave the eighteen. Fire department office is twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five?
Yep. And we usually leave two thousand for the fire hydrant. So, I got twenty-two five as a total for that page. Okay, here comes the final. Your streets.
What page are we on?
Streets and transportation, seven fifty.
Seven fifty is the first one, I own another page for streets. And then, it just started at seven fifty.
You guys have a streets one?
Yeah.
Do you really? Yep. Okay, so that is, hello.
Hello, bodies.
Okay.
You don't have to worry, you're comfortable.
So, the total you have on the streets, sixty-two thousand, nine thirty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the street lights are a different budget item, but that's why I put them down at the bottom.
All right.
Twenty-three, two eighty-two. So I say we leave the street lights at twenty-four thousand.
Okay, because it's so close, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, what's the number?
Seven fifty-one, Terry, it's already twenty-four thousand.
You don't have to change that one. Seven, seven fifty-one.
Streets and highways. Do you want to knock it down to seventy thousand? Where is seventy coming from? Because the actual, look on your packet there for streets.
Uh-huh.
It says sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two, yeah, I think that would be already.
That's what we actually spent.
All right.
So we're going to do that.
That would be closer, probably.
Now, what's the number?
Seventy, zero, zero, zero.
Now, what number on here?
Seven fifty.
Oh, down here. What was it again?
Seventy thousand.
Okay.
So all we're doing still is guessing, right?
That's all you can do.
No, we're guessing on the sum up, but we're going to be pretty close, because we're already done with that.
It's a lot more educated.
Yeah.
For snow removal, I don't know how you guys want to do that, so while we're sitting here, you can tell me how you want it done. Definitely salt expense goes under snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want part of the guys that use the gas? You know, like when they go to get gas, do you want that part under snow removal?
Well, that's what it's used for.
Well, they might use half the tank on snow removal and then use the rest next day on driving around doing other jobs, too, so it's not really.
Overall, if you have five or six snows, and they're going to be doing it five or six times, I don't know, it's probably going to be six of one, a half a dozen of the other.
Yeah, that's a little too hard.
It's going to be hard to break that down.
When they're out of trouble, if you have a big snow, they're going to be out, they're probably going to use more than one tank, no doubt how many vehicles in use.
True.
Three.
So do you want to keep the snow removal at three thousand?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's just do that for, for now.
For now, for now?
Yeah. Let's do that.
All right, let me see what we got here with this. So I have a total of ninety-seven thousand, is that right?
I can cut it up.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy-six.
That's twenty-four thousand.
They'll state others are dropping it, so it should be.
I've got ninety-seven thousand for a total.
What happened to the five hundred?
What, five hundred? I mean, just the total of this page.
Okay.
Yeah, that five hundred goes away when we changed our streets from eighty-one, five to seventy.
Got you, got you.
Ninety-seven's the total for streets.
See, this has been over and revised, that's staying the same, so this is, yeah. This is still not changed.
I'm just putting these over here. This is very bad.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you all?
Okay, on the culture and recreation page.
All right.
Nine hundred, nine forty-nine.
What number?
Nine hundred and.
Nine hundred and nine forty-nine, culture and.
To nine thirty-five.
Recreation.
What's the number in the packet?
Nine oh four under swimming pool.
Okay, swimming pool, what do you have?
I have, in the packet, there's twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and forty-seven cents expenses, twenty-one, two eighty-one.
And that's for the pool?
Yeah, because we didn't have anything there.
Right. And, oh, and then we have a spot in there, nine oh four, you said?
Right, for a swimming pool.
Okay, and it's, the number again, twenty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, two eighty-one.
Twenty-one, two eighty-one.
Yep. And then the library's got two thousand. So do you want to bump that up to twenty-two thousand?
Swimming, swimming pool?
Yeah. Or do you want to keep it there? I mean, that seems specific to be there.
And that's the, all, all the different expenses, but we, we have never put in a budget for, uh, equipment replacement, like the diving boards and the vacuum and stuff like that, that, that added up this year to almost two thousand dollars, and we didn't buy them. We have a broken diving board still, and we don't have the vacuum.
The vacuum's fixed.
Has it been fixed?
We got it back.
Okay, we did.
And don't we have a donor for the diving board?
Yeah, so they've both taken care of.
Okay, um.
But that's going to fall on the next year.
Right.
Right. I'm going to see if we can't find a cheaper dumpster service in Apple Valley, wait.
Do you want to bump it up to twenty-two?
Is that term right? Do you want to go twenty-five?
For the pool?
Pool brings in more than that, so the pool is able to sustain itself, it's just, are we using money from the pool to, to support the general fund? That's the big question, because the pool took in something like thirty-four thousand last year, right?
Yeah, knock that down to twenty-nine, because we got the five thousand dollar grant.
Okay, twenty-nine, and then the expenses were at twenty-one, so we bought eight thousand, uh, that we could bank for things like replacing, uh, the deck of the pool, for this, I don't know what they're doing digging up over there now, looking for the leak, is what I see.
They're looking for the leak.
So they're looking for the leak, spending a lot of money looking. So we need the budget for that, because pools leak, pools need concrete work, and they need stuff like that, we, it, it's like the water plant, we could have a, a fund of several thousand dollars that we can pull from for that pool when it needs repairs, because otherwise we'll be stuck having to pull it from other places, which is how it's been done before.
It's, until we get Westernport off our back and off our books.
Yeah.
We are not going to, and I get stuff paid back, because yes, I've had to take, I just had to pay ninety-four fifty. Last Wednesday, for the water bill. Honestly, in my opinion, well, it doesn't matter, because it's over with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the pool should be responsible for that water bill.
Yeah.
Because if we didn't have water in that pool, there'd be no swimming pool.
Yep, that's right.
That is my thing.
If they're leaking, they've created more issues.
Yes.
I did check that, I did calculations for that, and the, the pool makes plenty of money to pay for its own water, even if you build it just as a regular custom, it's not the end there for it, maybe we should be doing that.
Well, it's not going to matter when we get the well in.
It won't matter then, but that's still a while, a little while.
It's, hopefully, it's going to go online December first.
Good, good.
So, when we start getting money in the water account, then that money, I've got a list of every account and how much that needs to be paid back.
Good.
It's going to be paid back, and then we're going to be even-steven.
Good.
But until that time, when insurance rolls around, we've got an eight thousand dollar insurance. That pool is responsible for a quarter of it.
Yep.
Just like the water, the sewer, the general. My opinion. That's just what I think about it, yes.
And, and we've been pretty fortunate, that there's been a lot of donations.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of contributions, meals and et cetera, we've no guarantee that a lot of that stuff is going to happen next year.
Yeah, I don't think.
I mean, we bank on it, we hope we get it.
Well, we bank on it together, we do.
Reason it is, it may not come in like it's been coming in, so.
Got to make sure we budget enough for the pool.
Right.
So what expenditures do you want? Do you want twenty-two thousand for expenditures, or do you want more?
Twenty-two keeps it close to what it is, if we need to change it, we, we are allowed to make budget revisions through the year, if we decide that that's way off for some reason, we can, we can meet and decide that again.
So we got twenty-four thousand for that page.
Okay, so we're making that twenty-two, didn't we say for the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-two even, just.
So that's all as far as the expenditure to go, right?
I have a question, um, where's the credit card payment fit into this, into our expenditures, because it's fairly large.
It is fairly large, comes out of the general.
Comes out of the general, but so, so.
I looked at it, I looked at the statements, and then I looked to see what it was used for, like, the postage for the water, that goes on the credit card, because you just get on US stamp, or stamps dot com and print them out.
What's the balance on the credit card?
It usually runs about thirteen hundred dollars a month, on average.
Well, I mean, the, that payment you're saying, what, what's, what's our balance, though, to have a payment that big? Last month our payment was nineteen fifty-five, you have to have a pretty large balance on the credit card to have that bigger payment, don't you, or?
No, that credit card's paid off.
Oh, is it like a American Express kind of thing, they pay it off every time you use it, or how?
Yeah, it's, it comes from the state.
Oh, it's a, it's a P card. Oh, it's a P card, we're calling it a credit card, but it's a P card.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that explains it a little better.
Yeah.
So I see a credit card going, what credit card do we have?
We're not set.
It's paid off every month.
Every month.
Okay, so we don't have any balance on it.
And that's getting paid by the each budget department and everything, okay, good, because that was, that was worrying me a little bit, not good.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, that's good.
So.
And that ninety-four fifty a month that we pay Westernport should be fully covered by what we take in with the water, it's.
It's not.
I, I understand that it's not, but how is it not? I mean, is it just?
Salaries, water bonds, CO chemicals.
So, there's a list of things you take out of that.
There's something very interesting, though, with that, because it's supposed to be covered by it, the PSC, when we set those water rates, we're supposed to look at all those things that have to be covered by it, that you're just mentioning, and we should be setting the water rate so that it covers that, and it covers the ninety-four fifty for Westernport, and it covers every, that's how it's done, the water has its own separate budget.
We know that.
And I wonder if we shouldn't be looking at the water budget another time, too, because that is, each, that's another budget that's as large as the city budget, almost, it's a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and eighty thousand, or something like that.
Right.
I think there's going to be a big difference when we finish making payments to Westernport.
Oh, of course.
Then maybe we can take a look.
But, that's the big problem that we've had now for five years, is that we haven't been charging enough for the water. At each time Westernport raised their rates, we delayed, for some reason, raising ours, and, and that caused this huge pinch on our budget, I've been watching this for five years, it's been rises.
The PSC doesn't just say, okay, raise them, through the whole process, yeah.
I understand, I'm very familiar with that process.
It takes months and months and months for us to get.
But we look at, we're supposed to look at all of our expenses, and the PSC will allow us to raise the rate to where, where you have exactly enough money to pay for the water, pay for the salaries, pay for everything that's covered by the water, should be covered by that water rate.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think all of that information was submitted.
Absolutely, every time there's a tariff.
And somehow they came back and told us that it was okay to raise the water rates.
Mm-hmm.
To take care of the expenses, not only for the water from Westernport, but all the other things that was going on.
So how come we're, we're not, we don't have enough to pay those? How are we?
Well, I don't know.
It's because the water rate isn't high enough, still.
Well, it might not be high enough, but then again, we have to look at the other side of it. How much more can the people in Piedmont afford?
Well, but except that if we're, see, this, if we're covering that by saying that the people in Piedmont can't afford more, so we're not charging enough for the water, where is the money coming from that we're making up the difference?
Here's one big.
That's illegal to do that. It's illegal to cover that money with.
Every time we raise the rates.
It may be illegal when I have real.
Well, let Sharon finish, she's.
Every time the rates get raised, and we get more money in, more money has to go to the CWCR.
True, true, but that should all be built in, with.
You can, and how do you build it in when you say you want a twenty dollar increase on all that, and then the CWCR is up to, I think it's up to like fifteen hundred dollars a month now, just for water, and then I have to put it into the R and R, which also increases.
That's all is part of the water budget, that's all part of the water budget.
Well, I, I agree with looking at the water budget after the wells are in, because that's going to be a clean slate, there's no use us kicking that horse around today.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do the water budget when we have an absolute ground zero, this is where we're starting with these wells.
Yeah.
I'm all for doing that.
That's a good idea, I, I just think that we've been doing that for all these years, we've been supposed to be doing that, and our water rates should have been covering all this, we've had a couple rate increases, and I was always wondering about that, that, why, we did not ask for enough of a rate increase to cover the thing, and so what has happened is that, I know you don't want to beat the dead horse, but that is why we got so far behind on a lot of things, because we've had to take that water money from every other place.
And that could be, but it's all. Labor the point, but maybe PSC didn't take in the two things that Sharon.
Yes, they did.
Oh, no, they did, they did, yeah.
We just didn't tell them, we didn't tell them accurately how much we needed, that's part of it. So, that, we'll have some discussions about that, but that was actually a very large impact on Piedmont's finances over the last five years or so, much larger than it should have been, because, uh, when, when the water, when we first started paying seven thousand dollars a month for water, we went, we didn't raise the water rates at all. And that's a pretty neat trick, that we managed to pay eighty-four thousand for water that year without raising the rates, that really screwed Piedmont, screwed my language, we screwed ourselves by doing that, and we're still continuing to do that by not having enough water rate.
Well, we'll get, like I said, let's get this budget done now.
Right, let's do that, but this, this, that affects this budget too wrong.
Right, I understand that, but we are where we are, we can't do anything about it right now, we can't move it forward, we can't do anything about what happened yesterday, so there's no use kicking it around.
Well, we are trying to do things about what happened yesterday with all of this.
We're trying to avoid it happening again, but there's no use beating on it.
I think Greg's got the water budget.
Okay.
And, and why does Greg have the water budget?
Because he did it last year.
But Greg is only an advisor on the well.
Well, you have to ask him about that, right now, this is what we've got.
But he's not a, a member of the council, how is he controlling the water budget?
He's not controlling it, he wrote one.
Okay.
Okay.
He's done all.
And I don't know when he wrote it or anything else.
Greg Harvey has done wrong by us on that water budget, he has tried to conceal how much the rates need to go up, because of just what you said, if we came to the people of Piedmont and said, we have to raise your rates thirty-five dollars each, people would go ballistic, because that's really what it costs, but people are going ballistic now, because we've been spending that money on other things, we, we've been taking money from other areas to pay that ninety-four fifty a month. We don't have ninety-four fifty from, we don't have.
Nobody, nobody.
No, no, I haven't heard anybody go ballistic.
I know lots of people that are very unhappy about this, how this is.
We don't like.
You give us names, we'll talk to them.
I mean, we don't, I don't like it either, but it's just, and everybody downstate, the PSC will tell you, the lawyers will tell you, you're not supposed to do it, but we know you have to.
Yep.
And practically every city in, in, in West Virginia does it. The Kaiser does it.
And that doesn't make it right.
It doesn't make it right when it's done.
Doesn't make it legal, and it doesn't make it right. And so if you approve expenditures like that as a council, I will not vote to approve them.
That's probably net your front.
That's fine, yeah.
That will protect me legally.
Well, good.
When the law comes looking for the people who are approving illegal budgets, they're not going to be looking for me.
Just keep in mind that we're.
We'll deal with that if it ever happens, because it hasn't happened so far.
They'd have to go to every city in West Virginia.
Like the ladies municipal league told me, if you have a population under forty thousand, this is what you did.
You talk to, to Shelley at the, at the auditor's office and ask her if you think that, if she thinks that really is all right. I'm, I'm just having, I have to go right now.